All right. Good morning, everyone. We will call to order now at 9:03 this special meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission. As we begin, we'll let the record show that all commissioners are present electronically. And we just want to note that this special meeting is being called as a result of the tremendous 2020 Oregon wildfires that have been experienced throughout our state. As we began our last meeting, we paused to reflect on all the Oregonians and people throughout the region and even nationally who have been so terribly impacted by a unique year of wildfires. Those who've been impacted directly, those who've been impacted due to having unhealthy air for many of us a week, some much longer than that. And we just want to, as we begin this special meeting today, remember that again. Remember that there are Oregonians whose lives have been changed forever. And the work we undertake today is a part of responding to that, of cleaning that up and recognizing that the tools, regulatory tools that we have today don't anticipate this level of fire across our state, this many structures harmed. And so we want to begin remembering all those people who've been impacted by these wildfires and coming together as Oregonians to help them clean up and move forward as best they can. So with that, Director, would you like to say a few words as we begin our meeting today?
I would. Thank you, Chair George. And first of all, let me make sure that you can hear me.
We hear you great.
Okay, great. And let me also make sure in terms of the presentation that you can see a map that's entitled 2020 Oregon wildfires.
We do.
Okay, great. So Chair George, thank you for your opening remarks. The purpose of this special meeting of the Environmental Quality Commission is to address some immediate, short-term issues relating to recovery from the 2020 Oregon wildfires. I'm going to, first of all, provide a little bit of context for the commission about the fires. This will probably not be new news to most of you, but just to level set everybody at the same point. And then we'll get into the meat of the presentation and what it is that are the actions that the department is asking the commission to take today. I'll start out by noting we've got a number of people with us today. Brian Fuller, who is the Solid Waste Manager for Oregon DEQ's Western Region, has been working very hard on this. Also, Becca Postis, from our Office of Compliance and Enforcement, has really been helping coordinate some of the work on asbestos relating to asbestos that we're going to talk about today. And then also, one of our legal counsels, the attorney in charge from the Natural Resources Section of the Oregon Department of Justice, Paul Garrigan, also has been a key person in this work. We do have a team working on these issues in the department, and that team is part of a much larger team of state, federal, and local government folks who are working on response and recovery to the 2020 wildfires. And I'm going to talk about that as we go through the presentation. So first of all, the map that's up on your screens identifies the largest of the wildfires that occurred in Oregon so far during the 2020 season. It doesn't identify all of them. Frankly, if I were to put up the map that has all of the wildfires and named it, it would be kind of unreadable to you all because there have been so many of them. But this really has been an extraordinary year for wildfire in Oregon, not so much in terms of the number of fires, but the acres burned. We're well over a million acres of land burned by wildfire in Oregon. Our average is on the order of about 250,000 acres per year, so we're at four times that. Obviously, the other thing that's really unique this year is these large fires in the Oregon Cascades that were driven by the combination of dry conditions and very strong winds that blew the fires down the canyons into the valley in some cases is really a phenomenon that we have not seen on the scale before. So a few numbers for you. As I've said, we're over a million acres burned, residences destroyed. We're right now close to 4,100 residences destroyed. We're still going through the assessment process. We've also got another 1,400 structures as well that have been destroyed by wildfire. So one of our partners is the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. And Oregon Governor Brown in our Oregon Office of Emergency Management have been working with FEMA to get disaster declarations for the state of Oregon. And this map shows where we are so far. We have a number of different types of declarations, but there has been a major disaster declaration by the president. And we have two types of assistance that have been approved. And I'm not going to get into all the detail of this, but at a high level, individual assistance to Oregonians who have been affected by the wildfires. And then another category of assistance, public assistance, which comes to government entities to help in the wildfire response. So how are we organized in this work? The governor, Governor Brown, has formed several weeks ago a governor's disaster cabinet with an incident command structure to coordinate work on response and recovery around these wildfires. There are several task forces that have been formed underneath the governor's disaster cabinet to coordinate the work. And the one we're really focused on today is around debris management. So the debris management task force includes the Oregon Office of Emergency Management as the lead coordinator for the task force, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and then Oregon DEQ. We've been spending a lot of quality time with those agencies on this effort, and I think that is likely to continue for some time here, as you're going to hear about a little bit more in this presentation. So again, I'm setting context for today, a little bit of context about how debris management works following a large wildfire. It's a two-step process, and step one is to, on a property-by-property basis, assess what household hazardous waste is present on the property and then remove it as well. And we are well underway on that piece of work. This work is being paid for by FEMA, and it is being carried out to protect public health and the environment. Oregon has asked for what's called direct assistance from FEMA and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So the work will be carried out by EPA directly with teams of contractors that are being assembled right now and that will be on the ground and starting that work here as soon in some places, as soon as next week. So that's step one. And that step really needs to be completed before we get to step two, which is the removal of ash and general debris that remains on residential properties. I am focusing in this presentation on issues around recovery for residential properties. There's also work being carried out by the Department of Transportation and local governments involving clearing of hazard trees around our roadways that is also part of this work. So what are we looking at in terms of timeline for this? Step one, before we can work with property owners and get the household hazardous waste cleaned up underway, we need approval from property owners to go onto the property and carry out that work, again, at no cost to them. And we're working with our partners in the counties, eight counties, to collect rights of entry right now. We're, I think, well over 500 properties where we've gotten those approvals. So that work, again, will be starting in some areas next week. That's a 30- to 60-day project to complete the household hazardous waste removal on, again, somewhere between 4,000 and 4,500 different residential properties. As we complete the household hazardous waste work, we then can move to step two of this process, which is cleanup of ash and debris. Again, we are strongly encouraging residents who have lost homes to have the EPA contractors do the household hazardous waste cleanup. And then we are also working with FEMA and with our county and city governments to have a state-led effort, cleanup, ash, and debris on these properties, again, at no cost to the property owners. So let me talk about that for a minute. The option does exist for property owners to do this work themselves. And some of the regulatory actions that we're going to ask you to take later this morning relate to property owners who decide to do the work themselves or decide to hire a contractor themselves. And that certainly is something that property owners can do. We are encouraging them not to for two reasons. Number one, financial. For most property owners, if they have insurance, their insurance is unlikely to cover much of the cost of both the hazardous waste removal and then also the debris removal. Based on experience from California, we're looking at costs on a per-properity basis on the order of $70,000 to get these properties cleaned up and ready for rebuilding. And insurance typically is only going to pay a fraction of that. So getting FEMA assistance as much as possible for these homeowners is to their benefit, and we think ultimately will lead to a better outcome. The other reason for encouraging owners to have EPA do the household hazardous waste removal and then the state-led work on ash and debris relates to health and safety. I'm not going to talk about household hazardous waste. I think the hazards of that should be fairly evident. We're talking about pesticides, fertilizer, propane tanks, fuel, ammunition, munitions, a variety of things that are likely to be on properties that would get cleaned up during stage one. During stage two, again, based on science and research that's been done following the California wildfires, for many homes, we are going to see ash that contains asbestos. For structures that were built before 2004, it's common still to have asbestos-containing material that obviously all went up when these structures burned, and it's now in the ash. In addition, again, based on research that's been done following the California fires, we typically find high levels of metals and other contaminants in the ash and soil to some degree around the slabs or foundations of these homes. And lead, in particular, has been found to be a concern around many of these homes. So having the ash and debris cleaned up in a way that removes those hazards and leaves the property in a safe condition for homeowners to be able to rebuild is part of the reason that we're encouraging this to be done through a state-led effort. Again, we know there are property owners who want to move quickly and who want to get their property cleaned up quickly and rebuild, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But this just describes the overall approach. Okay, just a quick note here on household hazardous waste cleanup. I've talked about a little bit already. The direct federal assistance from U.S. EPA teams will be starting the middle of this month, and we hope to wrap up that work by mid to late December. This is, the estimated bill for this is about $15.5 million. Right now, we're looking at 75% of that cost being paid for by FEMA and another 25% being paid for by the state. We are hopeful that we will be able to eventually get a 90-10 split with FEMA. I'm not going to go into that detail today, but it's possible that that 25% non-federal share will come down. So again, step two is ash and debris cleanup. And a little bit more about this. It's likely to take six to 18 months to complete this. This is, if I haven't said so already, this is the largest major disaster in Oregon, certainly in recent time, in terms of the number of structures that we're dealing with. We are looking at a bill for cleanup of ash and debris that is likely to be more than $600 million. Again, FEMA will pay at least 75% of that, but this is a significant effort. A large part of that is handling hazard trees on and near road rights of way. And ODOT will be the lead and is the lead for that work, which has already started. And then a little more than half of the cost is estimated to be on private property. Okay, so what are we asking you to do this morning? There are basically two areas of action that we are asking the EQC to undertake. And the first, I've taken these in reverse order to how they're presented in your staff report, so my apologies, I flipped the order. I want to talk about the temporary rules relating to solid waste first because they are a little bit simpler and more straightforward. Our solid waste, state solid waste rules require, if you're going to stockpile solid waste, which can include trees and debris from trees as well as debris from properties, that you get, first of all, that you get what's called a land use compatibility statement from a local government for having a temporary stockpile of solid waste. So that's a land use action that is normally required of local government. That can take time and can also involve fees and other requirements from the local government. We don't want to hold up this work. We want homeowners, contractors, EPA, everybody who's involved in this work to be able to move quickly in terms of getting debris off of properties and stockpiled in temporary locations prior to its permanent disposal in an appropriate location, much of which will be in landfills. The authorization that we give for these temporary stockpiles is through something called a solid waste letter of authorization. And we typically charge a fee for that. So we are also asking you in these temporary rules to waive that fee. And then finally, the solid waste letters of authorization are typically time-limited to no more than 180 days, and we're asking you to extend that so that we can provide these authorizations for up to one year. So these are temporary rules that we're asking you to adopt today. Those are the main pieces of the temporary rules for solid waste. Let me pause. I've been talking a lot and see if Brian Fuller wants to add anything to what I just said in terms of the solid waste temporary rules.
And Director Whitman, this is Stephanie Caldera, the EQC Assistant. Brian Fuller, if you are on the line, could you either click the raise hand button or if you are connected by telephone, please press star nine. That will bring your line up so that we can get you connected here. So we now have Brian Fuller, who should now be able to control his audio and video.
Thank you, Director Whitman. Good morning, Chair George, commissioners. I would just add that, well, first off, can you hear me?
We hear you fine, thanks.
Great, thank you. I would just add that we are limiting this to the areas impacted or debris coming from the wildfires.
Perfect.
And just to clarify, before you move on, Brian, at the beginning of his presentation, Director Whitman shared a map that showed many of the largest fires. Just to clarify for the record, that doesn't, we're not suggesting that that's the only place to which these rule amendments would apply. We know that there were many smaller fires. My understanding is it would apply to those areas as well.
That is correct, Chair George. There's, in the text of the rule, we do list the fires that this would apply to.
Perfect, thanks very much.
And then, thank you, Brian. And then also in the materials that were given to the commission, at the very end, there's also a damage, what's called a damaged structure summary, which lists for each of the fires, the counties, and the number of residences. So that also ties back to the temporary rule text, and you can kind of see what we're talking about for each of the fires. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Mosby.
Yes, thank you, Chair George. Director Whitman, I agree with you. The one year, I think, is absolutely vital because we've got weather coming in, and some of these are vacation properties. But on page three, item B, proposed temporary rules relating, you put in there, I think it's the fourth sentence down, says, "The proposed temporary rule would suspend for a period of no more than 180 days, specific solid waste rules requiring this amount of a land use, L-U-C-S." But that doesn't seem compatible with the year. I mean, I agree with the year, but that scared me a little bit. I don't think it's enough.
Thank you, Chair George, Commissioner Mosby. For the record, Richard Whitman, I believe the reason for that is we are by statute limited to 180 days for the effective period of temporary rules. So I think the reason for that limitation is because of that statutory limitation. But I guess I would ask, I believe we've got Paul Garrigan on also.
Richard, this is Gary Bruman. I can address that question if you would like.
Yeah, so if you would, Gary, I think the question would be, even though the rules are only in effect for 180 days, could we, in the solid waste letter authorization, since we're making that authorization for a year, could we, as part of that, also just make it clear that the authorization doesn't require somebody to come back and get a land use compatibility statement six months in? I think that's what Commissioner Mosby is referring to.
Yeah, so Director Whitman, commission, this is Gary Bruman, your legal counsel, and also the solid waste program legal counsel in my day job. And everything Richard said, I think, was correct. So that reference that Commissioner Mosby referred to is the time period that the temporary rule will be in place. So the temporary rules can't be in place for longer than 180 days. The temporary rule will authorize solid waste letter authorizations for up to a year. I think we anticipate that most of those will be issued pretty early in that 180-day period. But once those are issued, they will remain good for a year, even though after 180 days, we will no longer be able to issue solid waste letter authorizations under the temporary rule. Does that make sense and answer your question?
Yeah, Gary, that does. My fear is you've got someone that owns a recreational property, you know, that's going to get snowed in. So I think we need to make sure we let the public know that they've got till early April to get the permission, and then they'll have the summer, next summer, to clear it out. So I just don't want some guy that maybe lives out of state, that has a vacation home up in the Detroit area, and it gets snowed out pretty quick, and he's figuring on doing everything, starting in next May or June. So, or maybe the other option is, at a meeting we have before the middle of April, we could issue another executive. I wanted to have a full year because a lot of these people, especially in the higher elevation areas, they're not going to be able to do this work until next summer, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you. Also, I had the same question Wade did about those timelines, so that was helpful. I do just think, to myself, even the ash and debris cleanup of six to 18 months, I just wonder about the timing of that. And I'm sure you guys have looked at California and Paradise and things like that and done some comparisons. But I guess my question was a little bit, you know, I spent some time in Jackson County. In fact, I was at a meeting there yesterday regarding some of these issues. And when you drive up and down the Bear Creek Greenway between Medford, it is, between Medford and National, it's absolutely mind-boggling, the damage that was done there. And so this is right along Bear Creek, major tributary to the Rogue River. And I'm just curious about this winter, when the rains come, and, you know, what happens with all this stuff? I mean, I don't see how it gets cleaned up between now and when it starts raining. What do we do about that, or is there any consideration for that?
Okay. Chair George, Commissioner Addington, yes, there are significant water quality concerns that are kind of a whole nother chapter in addition to the debris removal from individual residences. So there also are federal and state teams looking at erosion control measures and where the priority areas are for protecting from runoff from burned areas here as the rains come. And we're going to have rains this weekend, as I think everybody knows. So this is very immediate. And we have been talking on a daily basis with folks in California about their experience with this and learning from them, as well as FEMA and EPA, U.S. Forest Service, BLM, and our county governments. And so this is a unified effort to address all these issues. We're going to do our best on erosion control, but given the timing and scale of this, we're going to see impacts. It's unavoidable, and we're going to have to prioritize and put our effort on erosion control into areas where there's the greatest risk to rivers and streams, and in particular, any surface drinking water sources. So that work of identifying where the most severe risks are and where the priorities are for doing erosion control work is also going on in parallel with all this work focused on individual residences. Commissioner Addington, I haven't been down to Phoenix and Talent yesterday, but our lead on this work, Brian Bowling, was down there on Wednesday, all day, meeting with Jackson County. was down there on Wednesday all day, meeting with Jackson County and, um, brought back a lot of pictures, which I saw yesterday of, um, what the, what the communities look like along Bear Creek. And it is just, um, heart-wrenching and, and mind-boggling to see the extent of the damage.
And just a follow-up, if I may. Yeah, it is, Richard, it's, it, it is mind-boggling and it's, it's just hard to fathom that that could happen, uh, the way it did. I, I appreciate hearing that you were meeting with local folks, uh, Brian was. I, I just wanna, the meeting I attended yesterday, I just want to encourage the, the, uh, communication with local leaders, with the county and the cities, because what's happening right now is, my take is, it, it's confusing about who's doing what and who's in charge of what on cleanup and, you know, e- even getting to, um, temporary shelters and things like that. And, you know, FEMA hasn't really been there yet. I mean, I think there's some communication happening, but what I see is a whole community of leaders and stakeholders who are just dying to help and dying to, to do something. You have home builders, you have, you know, people with, uh, equipment that want to help. I suspect that FEMA brings in contractors to do this stuff, but anyway, I just think, really want to encourage the local, you know, coordination because really, there are just tons of people with a lot of resources that want to help, but nobody knows what to do right now.
Thanks, Chair George, Commissioner Addington. I, I completely agree with that. And, um, we have been working with, particularly with these eight counties, kind of commissions, and then their emergency operations folks. There's, there's the immediate, uh, response and recovery work here. And then there's, there's long-term work as well. I, um, I was, uh, the land use director during the Vernonia floods in 2007 and we, uh, we being that, can you, the leaders in that community and, uh, legislators from that area of the state, private business people, uh, worked together for a long period of time to help that community get back on its feet and, and put it, build back better. And we're gonna, now, this, with this major disaster, we're gonna have to do that same type of work in multiple areas simultaneously across the state. This is a really big effort. And so making sure that we're on the same page with local community leaders is going to be key to success on this. Okay, um, other questions about the solid waste temporary rules? If not, I'll go on to talk about the more complicated area, which is, uh, related to our, uh, on, for better or worse, very complex rules around asbestos and asbestos-containing material. Okay.
Please do.
So, um, action A is a proposed variance to a variety of requirements relating to asbestos-containing materials. Um, and just at a high level here, there are some requirements relating to asbestos that come from federal law. Obviously, we can't and we're not proposing to alter or waive anything with regard to federal law. But Oregon has quite a few state law requirements relating to asbestos as well. And so, um, there are two parts to what we're proposing, uh, relating to the asbestos rules. The first is a series of suspensions of requirements for, essentially for everybody, for all owners of residences and for operators carrying out debris removal. The second part, which I'll get to in a minute, is, um, specific to owners who are doing their own work. So this is the, this is the property owner who, decides that they want to move forward themselves, uh, in, with, with cleanup of property. Um, but this first part is for owners and operators, uh, in other words, contractors. Um, part of the reason this gets tricky is in addition to DEQ's rules, we're also dealing with rules from, um, Oregon OSHA, our agency that protects worker safety also. So we also have to be, we also have to be cognizant of the worker safety requirements. So here's what we're proposing, uh, be suspended for everybody who's doing this work. First of all, in, in most of, I'll just, a little commentary here, most of this is pretty obvious, um, that we would be doing this because the rules, frankly, are written for, are, aren't written in anticipation of this sort of situation of a large-scale wildfire. They anticipate, construction work in, in cities and communities in, in some cases anticipate fires, but fires involving like a single structure rather than fires involving entire community. So first of all, it's suspending the prohibition on open accumulation of asbestos-containing materials. That's what ACM stands for. Again, for structures that were built before 2004, um, many of them do contain, if we some asbestos-containing materials. Uh, so, so suspending that prohibition, we don't want anybody to be in violation just because their house burned down. Uh, there's also a requirement in the rules for a negative pressure enclosure and a prohibition on the use of mechanical equipment. Well, obviously, in this situation, we don't want those prohibitions. It's not practical to have those prohibitions apply in this situation. And then third bullet, um, our rules have a requirement for notification if somebody's undertaking an asbestos abatement project and we charge fees. And there's also a 10-day waiting period. So we're proposing to suspend those requirements. Other requirements, so those are the basic, um, suspensions that would apply to everybody. Uh, other requirements for how this material's handled, how it's transported, and ultimately how it's disposed of, and the requirements to use a licensed contractor remain in place. Um, let me go to the next piece and then, then I'll pause for, um, and see whether, uh, Becca Pustus or, um, any, any of our other staff have things they want to add. So the second part is for owners who are carrying out their own debris removal. Here, for owners who are doing their own work, we are sus- proposing to suspend the requirement that they used a licensed asbestos abatement contractor. And, um, uh, so, so again, this would be for homeowners who are, you know, essentially understand the risk and are willing to do the work themselves, but aren't, um, uh, using a contractor. Uh, all the other requirements for handling, transport and disposal, um, uh, would remain in place. So let me go back to the part one piece and, um, see if Becca is here and wants to add anything to what I just said. Again, I, to state the obvious, these apply to work that's being carried out in communities and residences that were burned by the wildfires. Becca?
Um, yeah, thanks, Director Whitman. Um, I would just add, um, maybe to address the timeframe for this and how it's different from the solid waste suspension timeframe. So here, we're suspending these rules under part one and part two for about a year until October 1st, 2021. Um, but the variance order also gives, uh, delegates the power to Director Whitman to extend that if there's a need, um, for additional time to complete the cleanup or if the emergency persists. It's different than the solid waste, um, temporary rule, which is, allows solid waste facilities that receive the waste from the wildfires to be set up under that temporary rule for six months. And I believe that's done mostly by counties and municipal governments. But then in terms of the work that's going on to remove the debris to take to those types of facilities or to disposal facilities, it would be, um, one year.
Commissioner Kyle?
So I just want to say that I, uh, fully support making sure that these types of variances are put into place so that homeowners can, uh, can respond quickly, easily and not get caught up, uh, in any kind of red, unintended red tape. My question with the asbestos, though, is only that this is, uh, an important hazard and a lot of the workers who deal with asbestos have proper training. So is there any effort either by OHA or coordination through DEQ to try to make sure that homeowners, get some education on how to deal with these materials safely so that they don't put themselves at risk for long-term health issues, uh, from, you know, accidental asbestos exposure and some of these other hazards? So just, uh, coordination either between agencies or, uh, seeing a need here to make sure that simple fact sheets and protective equipment are made readily available, uh, and explained to people who want to take on this work themselves.
Um, thank you, uh, Chair George, Commissioner Kyle. Uh, the short answer is yes. So there already, the fact sheets are out there already, uh, that, um, provide advice to homeowners who are doing their own work about what the risks are and what they should be doing to, um, provide protection to themselves and anybody in their household who's, who's helping them. And then if they hire a contractor or pay people to do the work, they are required to use a licensed, um, asbestos abatement contractor. That requirement's still in place. So those requirements to use somebody who has the training and who's required to use the appropriate protective equipment, still exist if, if you're paying somebody to come on and, and do this work.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Paul, did you want to add anything? Paul Garahan?
Uh, yes, thanks, Richard, Chair George, Commissioner Kyle. I, I would just add, and, um, Stephanie, I don't know if you want to go to the next slide again, talking about the part two of this. An important part of this, if the property owner takes this work on themselves, is that they are still instructed to make sure they keep all of the material adequate, adequately wet during all of the action to remove. So that, it, it includes provisions that in order to, uh, comply with the variance, they need to be taking those precautions at least, um, to take on the work. But I, I think as, uh, Director Whitman has explained, DEQ's recommendation is that because of the risks, they not take this on and either hire a contractor or allow the DEQ-funded, um, cleanup work to, to take care of this. Um, so this is just for homeowners who take this on, um, themselves or if they're getting help from, you know, neighbors, but only for volunteer labor. And if they pay anyone to do the work, they have to follow the rules to make sure it's a licensed contractor.
Thanks, Paul. Did you have another question, Commissioner Kyle?
Yeah, I, if it's, uh, I just want to actually kind of follow up on what Greg Addington said, which is, uh, I can appreciate how we're trying to clear some of the, you know, administrative hurdles for this, but the communication of this to the people on the ground is going to be so critical. Um, and so as Greg says, you know, if it seems at all, uh, like there's, uh, confusion, this, whatever we do here isn't really going to have the desired outcome. So, uh, focusing on that local level communication with the homeowners, you know, I think is going to be so key in making sure that all of this happens. So I don't know if there's extra resources that we could apply to this to help with that communication. But I think that's, uh, where all the good intention here could just fall to the wayside if we're, if we're not making sure communication is clear.
Rebecca?
Um, yeah, I think that's a really good point. We have already developed, um, a one-page sort of flow chart to explain the variance and it also includes kind of warning language about how we don't recommend this part-two option. Um, we're also coordinating with Al Rapa, which, um, we anticipate would approve a, a similar variance for Lane County. And I know they will also be getting the word out, but, um, that public information will be posted to our DQ website. Um, and I believe there's a news release that would go, we could, uh, issue about it. But I think it's a good point about how else can we get, uh, the message even further, uh, to the ground.
Yeah, I don't think people are necessarily going to be checking websites. I think we need to really make a concerted effort to get this into people's hands and be at the places where the people are trying to, to work themselves through this. So, uh, getting as local, uh, as possible is going to be super important.
Whitman?
Yeah, if I could, Chair George, and thank you, Commissioner Kyle. So the communications part of this is, is really key. And this is where, lo- our local partners, particularly county governments, are so important, um, because it, at that local level, that's, that's where, uh, the communication is going to be more effective. There is, um, at the state level, wildfire.org and dot gov is the website for all this information that is coordinated by the Office of Emergency Management. And there's a page there for, um, wildfire response and recovery that includes these materials. The flow chart that, um, Becca just referenced will be posted there. We're, we're going to be getting that out uh, to local governments also to use with, um, with homeowners and, and with contractors. And I, I'll just stress that on the contractor side, we also need to work with uh, our, with Oregon OSHA and contractors to make sure they understand all these requirements as well. That's, that's probably the, the most effective way of getting some of this information out. So this is unfortunately, uh, I'll pause there, Commissioner Kyle, you had it.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think even go further local, where people are really going to start, um, where the rubber starts to hit the road on this, is when they're filing their insurance papers and things like that. So I would encourage you to look for avenues that perhaps the state, local government, uh, don't typically use, but it's where people are going to be concentrated, trying to figure this out and talking to people. So, you know, like, I can't stress this enough, if there's a lot of things happening at the state and even at county government levels, but we're talking about trying to get to the people who have been affected and, and have lost everything. So they don't necessarily even have an internet to use to check. Um, so it's really about like grassroots, uh, outreach at this point. I think that is absolutely critical.
Thanks, yep.
Thanks, Commissioner. Important point.
Okay, um, so that really, that is the staff report for this. Um, let me go to the next slide here. Uh, before I, um, we talk about the motions, let me just note, um, you know, this is, uh, a special emergency meeting of the EQC. We're going to be talking about this more. This is going to, this is going to be both a sprint and a marathon. And, um, uh, we have our upcoming November EQC meeting. Uh, I expect there will be more discussion about this. And as we, as time goes on and as we work with these communities to recover and rebuild, um, there's significant damage to infrastructure in these communities as well as homes. And, um, you know, how they rebuild, uh, is also going to involve some of our other programs, our Clean Water, State Revolving Fund, and, and other programs. So much more to come on this, uh, as we work in, um, a, a fair number of communities to, to rebuild from this, uh, terrible disaster. This is really just the first step, um, in terms of getting us going. Uh, and I also want to emphasize, um, DEQ is, is one part of a, a task force, a team that is working on this. I've been spending, uh, a significant time with ODOT, um, on this issue as well as Office of Emergency Management and Brian Bowling. And you all know, uh, our central services, uh, administrator has really been point on this. And then there's a whole team of experts in particular program areas who experts in particular program areas who are working on this as well. So it's a significant effort that's going on right now. So with that, Chair George, these are the two motions. The first one being a motion to approve the variance related to the asbestos requirements. And the second, a motion to adopt the temporary rules relating to solid waste. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, taking these in turn and starting with the asbestos related motion. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments you have regarding the asbestos related proposal? Okay. While hearing none, I would entertain a motion on these proposed asbestos amendments.
Happy to make a motion, Chair George. I move that the Environmental Quality Commission approve the proposed order granting a temporary variance from certain asbestos requirements for cleanup activity on properties burned by the 2020 wildfires, included as attachment A to the staff report.
And I think we want both parts included in the motion.
I would recommend that you make separate motions on this. This is Gary Bruman.
Okay, thank you, Gary. There is sometimes reason to have separate motions. So my apologies. So let's, the motion stands as made. Do we have a second to the motion?
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify same sign. Any abstentions, the motion carries. We have a second portion to the asbestos related. No, sorry, the next motion pertains to the solid waste amendments. And we would entertain a motion at this time.
All right, I'll move that the Environmental Quality Commission determined that a failure to act promptly would cause prejudice to the public interest or the interest of the parties concerned as provided under the jurisdiction of section of attachment B to the staff report and adopt the 2020 wildfire response solid waste letter authorization. Temporary rules as seen on page five of attachment B to the staff report as part of OAR Chapter 340 of the Oregon Administrative Rules. Good grief.
Well said, Commissioner. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we require further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed signify same sign. Any abstentions, the motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Director and staff and commissioners. This is incredibly important work and I appreciate all the comments that have been made today about how critical it will be to work with our local folks to find new ways to reach people where they are in times of tremendous personal loss. I think we all understand that that's going to be absolutely key. And we thank the staff who are out there on the ground, working so hard to do just those things. Thank you very much. Any additional thoughts, Director?
Just thank you. Thank you all for getting together on short notice and approving these. And I appreciate the input on the communications piece. And we've been hearing this from a lot of people. That's going to be a continuing effort on communications. And it is, it's critical that for the success of this effort, that we get that part is as good as we can.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, Commissioner Addington and others made reference to those communities coming together. And that is what we see, right? We see loss and difficulty in these times of hardships. But we also see neighbors and communities and business. The guy down the street with the chainsaw showing up to help out and communities coming together and really doing what they can to help one another. And so it's time for that. And we really appreciate our staff at DEQ and all the the people who work for local government, who are doing that hard work now. So we just want to thank them for their very hard work. As you said, this is going to be a marathon. So we know that work's going to continue for many, many months. So I want to thank everybody for this hard work. And unless we have any other announcements or business, I think we're ready to finish up our meeting. All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:59.
So moved?
Moved.
Can I consider that a second, Vice Chair Barasa?
That's right.
Excellent. Any opposition to concluding our meeting? All right, hearing none. Thanks again, everyone. Stay safe out there, stay well, and we'll talk to you soon. Take care and thank you everyone who joined us today. Goodbye, everyone.
And thank you. This is Stephanie Caldera, EQC Assistant. At this time, we will close our recording and end the special meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.